We will call the August 11th, 2025, meeting of the City Council of Coldwater, Michigan to order. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Richmond?
Present.
Councilmember Mackin?
Present.
Um, here's Councilmember Johnson is absent. Councilmember Knott?
Here.
Councilmember Houts?
Here.
Councilmember Hazel Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Petsko?
Here.
Councilmember Beckwith is absent and Mayor Kramer.
I am here. We've heard from Councilman Beckwith. Uh, he will not be here. Uh, Councilman Johnson will be arriving, but late. So we look for a motion to excuse them at this point. Thank you.
Motion to excuse.
Support. Thanks, John. We have a motion. We have support to excuse them. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? They are excused. We have a spot on our agenda now for public comments and we have one at the end of the meeting for public comments. So if anyone would like to address the council, they may do so now. Being none, we'll move to our consent agenda. These are items we consider to be routine. We'll take them in one motion unless somebody up here or some of the audience wishes an item removed for further discussion or clarification. Tonight on our consent agenda, we've got our minutes of July 28th, our closed minutes of July 28th, our library advisory minutes of July 7th, our BPU minutes of July 2nd, South Central Power Agency minutes of May 29th, their work session minutes of May 29th, our BPU financial statements for June of 25, City of Coldwater financial reports for June of 25, a memo for me regarding some board appointments and a letter from Karen Kiss, uh, student council advisor at Coldwater High School requesting permission to hold the homecoming parade on September 19th, 2025 at 5:00 PM. Those are the items in our consent agenda. Does anyone in the audience wish anything removed? Anybody up here? And a motion to approve, please. Thanks, Randall.
Support.
Thanks, Travis. We have a motion. We have support to approve our consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Uh, we have a public hearing on right now, a public hearing on the necessity of a special assessment to establish residential city sidewalk maintenance and improvement program. So we will, we will open the public hearing, we'll take public comments and then we'll close the public hearing and bring it up to council for, uh, action. So we will open the public hearing. Samantha, you want to give an update?
Yes. Good evening, everybody. Thank you. Um, so during the last meeting, you guys, um, approved the desirability of this project, hence why we're here tonight for the public hearing. Um, this is the second of four meetings that occur throughout a special assessment process. So upon approval last week or last council meeting, um, I had to notify all property owners of this public hearing and assessment coming forward as well as a publication of this hearing. On the agenda next is resolution that will further expand on this for you guys to navigate through at that point. Um, so if we approve tonight, um, that'll proceed for me to create the assessment role, further notify property owners of their actual assessment pertaining to this improvement and, um, make another publication for that next hearing as well.
Thank you, Samantha. So we'll open up for public comments. If anyone would like to speak on this issue, they may do so now. Please come up, just please state your name.
My name is Julie Tell and I'm a property owner in Arrowhead Drive. We have an extra lot there. And talking to some of the other property owners in that area, we're wondering what the assessment will be and what is the, um, why would you put sidewalks in, in lots that are, have not been developed?
I just, it may not seem right, but in, uh, we take public comments. We, we can address this, uh, after we close the public hearing, but we can't answer and give question, give and take. I'm sorry.
Hey, that's fine. That's fine. I just, you know, we, that we're curious about that. Normally you put your sidewalk in last, so, okay?
Yeah, thank you very much. Any other public comments at this time? We'll close the public hearing and move to discussion and, uh, a memo from Sam. You want to talk about the, uh, resolution that you're asking us to approve?
Yeah.
And just by way of explanation, Sam, you might want to, back in, back when those subdivisions were established, there was a group that did not want sidewalks and there was a group that did want sidewalks on council. And the council elected to require the homeowners to put in sidewalks. And the thought process at that time was that if you're going to make homeowners do sidewalks, you had to complete the sidewalks at some point in time, or there was no point in starting them. And the decision was made in the late 90s to when 75% of those subdivisions were complete, the sidewalks had to be connected. So that's where we are now. In the last few years, both of those subdivisions reached 75%. And the logic being you had to complete them or you should have never started them in the morning, agree, or the beginning, agree or disagree. That was the logic. So we're at that point where there are 75% or more finished and we are requesting to complete them. So, Sam?
Yes. So within the next resolution you have before you further explains the unit of benefit that'll be established per property and for their assessment pertaining to this improvement. So how we conducted that, um, according to the master deeds for each specified subdivision or their legal descriptions, we took that linear footage for each property um, by one of those two methods. Um, we multiplied that by the width of the sidewalk installment of four feet, which gives us an overall square footage for each property. Um, our engineering firm Fishback gave us a $15 per square foot. That includes labor and materials with that cost. Uh, multiply that by your overall, overall square footage and that gives you your approximate assessment that you'll be paying for the duration of that 10-year assessment. I believe that's the big bullet points and how that's going to function. Um, so if you were to approve that resolution tonight, um, like I said, that'll then prompt me to finish the assessment role for the sidewalk improvements for all the properties included. Um, each property owner will get notified of their approximate assessment and then we will publish another hearing in the paper for, um, setting the next public hearing on August 25th.
If I'm not mistaken, Samantha, homeowners have the option of doing the sidewalks themselves if they choose to, or is that correct, Keith?
That's been debated.
Okay.
Um, it does, um, create somewhat of a conflict for staff if that is an option. Um, because once the assessment role is established, that's the role. Um, but we have talked about pivoting a little bit depending on where you guys would like to go.
Whatever decisions may now be communicated to the homeowners at some point. Okay.
Yep.
Uh, questions for Sam or Samantha or, uh, comments?
Um, it's a 10-year assessment?
Yes.
Is there going to be interest charged?
Um, that was talked about as well. I know our previous special assessment, I believe there was a 1% um, interest on that. Um, so I believe that's what we were thinking for this one as well.
Is 1%?
Yes.
One question I have, uh, a long time ago, this was covered and there was a issue of corner lots.
Mm-hmm.
So if somebody has 80 feet of a corner lot and then they have the city's additional whatever, around 20 feet, that's 100 feet, and then they have to pay to go all the way down their side lot. So some, are, are any of these corner lots?
We do have a couple that are corner lots.
And are they going to be assessed for the front and down the side?
Um, as of right now in the assessment rule, yes.
So somebody could be facing a couple hundred feet for a single lot, uh, including, yeah, the city, the side city. And I personally don't find that fair. Um, that part of it's on a corner lot where somebody, everybody else down your street is paying for 80 feet or whatever your lots are. And then because you're on a corner and you have 150 feet deep, what's, what's the long, you know?
Um, I don't know as far as the square footage. I do know approximate, um, costs for the properties that range on for the assessments.
So what's the difference between a?
So right now they're ranging anywhere from 3,900. Our biggest one is just over 23,000.
And that's probably because it's a corner lot?
Yep.
So 4,000 to 24,000, so $20,000 difference. I just personally, I don't, I don't like that.
Well, and we could, under new business, we could bring up an issue. There was a time where we, the city would pay a percent of one side, if I remember, when we used to, I know.
I think they paid 50%.
Of the longest side or something?
Fifty percent over so many, over so many, something, something like over 100.
Samantha, you know how many corner lots there are in the assessment?
I want to say two.
Two in North Shore or no?
Two, possibly three. I want to say two for sure.
If you're inclined, Jim, you might want to bring up the new business. We have a discussion. Uh, it doesn't have to be decided right now, but we could certainly talk about that.
Yes, like I said, this is a four-step process. So at any point, if you guys decide to not go forward, then that can be that. It's not concrete just because you vote tonight.
If you're going to send letters out, notify them of estimated cost, it'd be nice to know.
It'll be estimated cost and I'll also give them, um, notification of the next two meetings we'll hold pertaining to this.
Okay with that, bringing up under new business, see what the consensus of council is?
Yeah.
Questions for Sam, folks? Uh, our action either, uh, adopt or not adopt second resolution number 2575. John?
Support.
Thanks, Travis. Final questions? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Uh, number 12, bills and accounts are asking us to pay 241,231 dollars. Keith, any, uh, unusual bills in there?
Not unusual, but I would just note some of the bigger line items. This, uh, this meeting include, uh, the purchase of our in-car computers for the police department, uh, replacing those, uh, the garbage, the monthly garbage contract, uh, with Republic, uh, the first installment of our upgraded phone system in this building and, um, and the demolition of 295 South Clay.
Questions on the bills for Tom or Keith? Not a motion to pay with those. Thanks, Chad.
Support.
I missed it over there. Thanks, Scott. We have motion, we have support to pay our bills. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Bills are paid. Number 13, city manager report. Keith?
Thank you, Your Honor, Council. Good evening, everyone. A lot of events this time of year and I'll just run through some of them. Uh, Hops on Monroe continues. We have three more weeks of Hops on Monroe on Thursday nights. So come on down, uh, for food trucks and, um, refreshments and musical entertainment on South Monroe Street. There again on Thursday nights, Entertainment of the Stars. So the last of the six weeks of Entertainment of the Stars is tomorrow night, Tuesday, Oc- August 12th at 7:00 PM in Heritage Park. And so, uh, one last chance in which to, uh, uh, participate in, uh, the Entertainment of the Stars, uh, free outdoor concert. Uh, it doesn't seem, and it, it's a little bit discouraging. It suggests that Apple Fest and, uh, is, uh, is nearing, but that's just over a month away. And, uh, and so just to plan for that, uh, I mentioned it, uh, as well as to get vendors. Uh, we want to beat our record from last year as far as the number of eventers, uh, vendors, uh, that are participating. So that's scheduled for Saturday, September 20th, and that runs from nine to three. And then we also have a couple of things that the, the BPU and the city are involved in, uh, they're sponsoring the Household Hazardous Waste Event. Uh, that annual event include, uh, document shredding. That'll take place on Saturday, September 27th at the Branch County Fairgrounds and that'll be from nine to two. And, um, also, uh, which wraps up in a couple of days here, uh, we're encouraging, uh, both employees and the public to participate in a school supply drive. And, uh, and those wishing to donate, uh, school supplies or funding for school supplies for all of our local, uh, school, schools within the, uh, BPU service district, uh, can make those donations at City Hall or the Recreation Center. A couple of updates on city projects. We had hoped to hear that we would get the completed with paving on North Clay Street today. That's now scheduled for tomorrow. There again, uh, weather permitting and with the idea that it's still going to be open, uh, by the end of this week, uh, for the start of school next week. And then once North Clay is completed from Grand Street, uh, to Waterman, uh, the next phase of it will begin on August 18th, uh, from Waterman to Harrison. And part of that second phase of the project, in addition to the second phase of North Clay, a couple of other streets will be repaved, milled and repaved, and those include Elizabeth, East Clark and South Clay. Uh, so for the residents in those areas, just to, to make note of that over the next month or so, uh, they'll be working in, on those streets and those areas. And then lastly, uh, Butters Avenue, uh, between Race Street and Garfield continues. Storm sewer installation is underway. Concrete curb and gutter continues and we still hope to have it, uh, paved by, uh, the end of the month. So a couple of projects that weren't on your, um, printed update include, uh, the rec center. So over the past week, uh, the wood floor went through its annual resurfacing and maintenance at the, uh, Robert W. Brown Recreation Center. And while the facility was closed, uh, we took the opportunity to seal code and stripe the parking lot, uh, for the rec center. So that was completed and the building will reopen, uh, also later this week. And then, um, the soccer field out at North Shore, uh, is part of Heritage Park. Uh, we have a new set of soccer goals and, um, and, uh, football uprights that'll get installed, uh, to help facilitate the groups that use that. Um, and so that soccer field slash rocket football field slash many different uses, uh, we'll see that upgrade as well. And that's what I have tonight.
Thanks, Keith. Questions for Keith? Comments? If not, we'll move to item 14, a letter from Keith regarding proposed Michigan Historic Preservation Network House Bills to expand and preserve state tax credits.
Thank you.
You?
So I had asked Christine Delaney, who's, yeah, because Executive Director of the Tibbetts Opera Foundation to kind of speak to this as they brought it forward to us, but, uh, something I think that you'll, uh, be favorable in, um, considering.
Thank you for allowing me to be here and to speak on it. Um, these two house bills have to do with historic tax credits. Um, we all we're very fortunate in Coldwater and Branch County to have some amazing historic architecture. Uh, much of Michigan enjoys the same. Uh, this is a bill that helps those who want to preserve the historic buildings. It can be an expensive endeavor, but it's a very valuable endeavor. Historic buildings are part of our history. They're fabric of who we are in many ways. They demonstrate exceptional craftsmanship and architecture oftentimes. Um, they also are part of our memories. I mean, how many people have memories tied to these historic buildings? Uh, they also are the greenest building. It's our, the, the greenest building is the one that's already built. So when we took, talk about ecology and, uh, conservation, uh, carbon footprint and all those things, a historic building mark, checks many of those marks, but it is an expensive endeavor. Historic tax credits are one means in order to help fund these projects and it is not a grant. It is, uh, it's a tax credit after the investment has been made. The project, excuse me, the tax credits were very active from 2000, excuse me, from 1999 to 2011. And then they were disbanded for a while. In 2020, uh, Tibbetts was able to be a part of, um, an effort by the Michigan Historic Preservation Network. And we helped reinstate those tax credits and also make them more accessible to organizations that are nonprofits like the Tibbetts Opera House. The cap at that time was $5 million and 25% of a project cost could receive tax credits. These two bills are looking to increase that cap to, to $30,000. From 25 up to, excuse me, to $30,000 and the cap from $5 million up to $100 million. To give a perspective on that cap, in the first hours that the portal opened, the very first year that this was reinstated, they had more, they had almost $368 million in development that was requesting, um, tax credits. A single project, $40 million restoration project, which is not unheard of, would wipe out the entire $5 million cap that's available. So it's very important if we're going to really make this tool available to more investors that we raise that cap. Within the project, they will also be separating groups so that if, for instance, Tibbetts Opera House were to go after tax credits for restoration of its building, we would not be competing with projects in Detroit. We would not be competing with residential projects. We would be competing with other projects in similar sized communities, rural communities. So it makes it a more equitable, equitable process with having separate caps for each of these different groups. It is a valuable toolkit. It is one of many tools that need to be used in a restoration effort. Um, as Tibbetts continues to look towards restoring the theater more fully, we've done a lot. We've already invested 4.3 million dollars into that building over the last 20 years. There's more to be done. And as we look at further investment into the building, this becomes one of the tools that we can use effectively, um, to to achieve our vision for the theater. Are there specific questions that I could answer?
Questions for Chris? Good explanation. Uh, they're asking us to, to send a letter, a resolution of support to the legislature is what you're asking for.
That's exactly what this is.
If we're so inclined, that would be a motion to adopt resolution 2578. Jim, thank you.
Support.
Thanks, Chad. Any final questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thanks, Chris. Good.
Thank you very much.
Very much. 13, a letter from Keith regarding the proposed temporary closure of South Monroe Street for First Responders Appreciation Day. Keith?
Thank you, Your Honor, Council. So all the letters have my name on them, but I have people in which that can speak to the events as we go through those. So we have representatives from, um, the Branch County Association of Realtors here to go over their project.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm Amber Modert. I am president-elect of Branch County Association of Realtors. Um, do we have slides? Yeah. Um, so the Branch County Association of Realtors is requesting the temporary closure of Monroe Street on Tuesday, October 28th from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM to ensure the safe setup, event and cleanup for our fourth annual First Responder Appreciation Day. On the event itself will take place from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, but the requested street closures from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM to ensure safe setup, cleanup process, um, for all participants and attendees. This event is a heartfelt tribute to the brave and selfless contributions of our local first responders, firefighters, law enforcement and EMTs, paramedics and more. Um, slide two. Here we display the flyer for the event, which highlights date, time, location, um, clear details for the community, that sort of thing. Um, slide three, why we're hosting this event. October 28th marks, uh, National First Responders Day. A day set aside to honor the courageous individuals who respond to emergencies, risk their lives daily and protect our community. These individuals often work under stressful, high-risk conditions to safeguard our health and safety. BCA R's tribute, um, as an organization, we believe it's essential to show our appreciation. This small, meaningful tribute is our way of saying thank you to those who dedicate their lives to keeping us safe. Um, the community impact, the event serves as a reminder of the critical role first responders play in the community and fosters a deep sense of appreciation for their service. Slide four. Um, why Monroe Street closure matters. Monroe Street offers high visibility for the event and an ideal location off US 12, providing a safe, accessible space without the risk of high traffic. The closure allows a controlled environment, creating a more secure and welcoming space for both the first responders and event attendees. Um, closing Monroe Street also enables us to maintain foot traffic flow, welcome affiliate vendors, involve local restaurants in the event and offer a comfortable spacious seating or setting to properly honor our local heroes. The street closure will be from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM and the actual event will run from 11:00 to 2:00. This provides a short duration of impact with limited disruption to surrounding businesses or traffic. BCA R is committed to working closely with the city to ensure everything goes smoothly and any concerns are addressed ahead of time. Slide five. This event will be held right in the heart of a local business district, making it easily accessible to the community. It's a great opportunity for local businesses to get involved and show their support. Credentialed first responders will receive a ticket for a free lunch. We've partnered with El Taco Loco and Broadway Grill. This event is made possible through the generosity of our local affiliate businesses, um, banks and credit unions, home inspectors, insurance agencies, entitlement companies, and many more businesses and partners who show and supporting, who share in supporting our first responders. Um, local sponsors will present booths with booths offering small gifts and tokens of appreciation for our first responders. Um, slide six. So, um, this event has always been supported by notable local businesses such as Century Bank and Trust, Consumers Credit Union, Honor Credit Union, Greenstone Farm Credit Services and others, including Serve Pro, Southern Michigan Bank and Trust and the City of Coldwater. We were able to honor over 50 first responders last year and it was a resounding success with great community participation. With our efforts to promote the event early and engage a broader audience, we aim to double the number of first responders and community participants this year, expanding the event's impact. Slide seven. A snapshot of community members showing up to honor our first responders. These photos capture the genuine gratitude shared between first responders and the public. Slide eight. Our local businesses actively participating, um, by offering gifts and support and these images show how our responders, or I'm sorry, our sponsors contribute to making the event a success. Slide nine. Um, smiling faces of both first responders and attendees expressing thanks. These candid shots capture the heartfelt appreciation that define the event. Thank you for taking the time to hear our vision, um, First Responders Appreciation Day and for considering our request to temporarily close Monroe Street. Your support isn't just about street closure. It's about honoring our heroes who put their lives on the line daily to protect and serve Coldwater. By backing this event, you're helping send a powerful message that we see you, we thank you and we stand with you. It's a meaningful way for the entire community to show our first responders the appreciation they deserve. We're deeply grateful for your leadership and support in making this event a reality. Together, we're giving our community a chance to celebrate those who give so much to our city. Your commitment to this cause is what truly makes our community stronger. Thank you again for your partnership. You have any questions?
Questions? Okay, we, uh, we love our first responders and we also love closing Monroe Street. So it's kind of, it's kind of a win-win thing, but, uh, questions, uh, motion, pleasure? John?
Support.
Chad, we have motion support to approve this request. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ah, number 16, a letter from Keith. We didn't get applause, did we? Letter from Keith, uh, regarding a proposal to develop the Jim Start Memorial Bandstand and Amphitheater. We have with us the, uh, famous Brian Stout, Laurie Stout and the esteemed Dr. Bruce Young. So I don't know who's taking this over, but clearly not Brian. No, no. Laurie?
Uh, hi, I'm Laurie Stout. Thank you for having us here tonight. Um, the project of the band shell came to me about three years ago, shortly after Jim passed away and I wanted something that would, um, kind of benefit the majority of the city of Coldwater and the surrounding area. Um, instead of doing a scholarship from the funds that came from his celebration of life and, and visitation, I wanted something that would, um, benefit a lot of people in a lot of different venues or different ways. So, um, we've worked with, uh, my daughter has put together a conceptual drawing, which we brought to the city, uh, back in December. And that's been a little more fine-tuned. We do have kind of an estimate on, on total cost. And we're just looking for the site and the other council's approval in Heritage Park.
My, my role in this is, uh, Jim graduated from high school with me and, uh, he's been a, a valuable member along with his wife and others in the community as far as supporting the musical, uh, aspects, especially like you still have music in the park. We think this would be the venue, would be a perfect fit, uh, perfect, uh, venue for that kind of a thing. We know full well that the price tag on this is pretty substantial, but we're not asking for money from you right now. Maybe in the future, but we're also asking for approval of the sighting of it and we'll wait into the stream on that, uh, financially later on.
Council, we're aware of this and I can tell you that Bruce and Laurie and Keith and Mike Beckwith and I did talk to, uh, a dozen or so of the neighbors to give them a heads up. And I think we can say we got nothing but overwhelming, uh, positive response from the closest neighbors. So, uh, questions for Laurie or Bruce? Nice project. I mean, there's a long way to go, but it's a nice project, so.
Right, if I may, Your Honor, so this, this is the first step. This is getting essentially formal approval to locate it there so that the family can then proceed with fundraising. And then within the memo itself, it does And then within the memo itself, it does outline why there. Because one of the questions that we received a couple of times was why Heritage Park? And there's a list there as to the amenities that already exist in Heritage Park would facilitate and work well with the inclusion of a band show. When you think about parking and access, restrooms, available utilities, the nearby playground, and just the overall topography of the site. It's kind of a natural amphitheater. And so those are the reasons why they're seeking to have this particular project located in Heritage Park.
Questions, thoughts?
Great project for the city.
Great project. So we'd like to either adopt or not adopt Resolution 2581.
Move to adopt.
Thanks Randall.
Support.
Thanks Scott. Any final questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, guys. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Number seventeen, a letter from Keith regarding a proposed US 12 downtown streetscape engineering contract. Keith?
Thank you, Your Honor. If you recall, during the course of our budgetary process for this current fiscal year, we talked about the potential for doing a streetscape project along US 12, primarily from Jefferson Street West to Clay Street. You pledged potential funding for that in the neighborhood of $200, or $2 million. And to facilitate or kick off the project, the first thing in which to do would get the physical survey of the work or of the area underway and to begin to take traffic counts. We know that we'll need to work with MDOT and as we're working within the MDOT right of way. And there are some traffic aspects and components that we know will come up during the course of the design discussion. But before we can do any of that, we need to physically survey the street and right of way. And so this adoption of Resolution 2579 would facilitate that. The consultant that we've been working with solicited bids for engineering services. And we are recommending Spalding De Decker out of Grand Rapids. They actually were less than our engineer of record, Fishbeck. And is more, does more traffic-related work than does Fishbeck. So we're seeking your approval for Resolution 2579 in the amount of $40,560.
Questions?
Motion to adopt Resolution 2579.
Grandma?
Support.
Thanks, Hillary. We have motion, we have support. No final questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Now eighteen, a letter from Keith regarding a proposed replacement of the south wing HVAC system.
You had all the fun presentations and now we're in the middle of all the
Bobby's next to spend.
The spending requests. So inasmuch as we have started a new fiscal year as of July 1st, one of the things that we did budget for and is part of the ongoing maintenance of this particular facility, the Henry L. Brown Municipal Building, City Hall, is the replacement of the heating and cooling units over time. And so we have bids for that, which would be divided among the city's general fund and utility funds. And this request, a similar request is going before the Co-Order Board of Public Utilities Board at their next meeting. But we're seeking your approval to award bids to ACRE and Night Watch in the amounts listed. And Resolution 25-80 would facilitate that. So just to reiterate for the recording, ACRE, both of these companies are the ones that we currently use that they replaced the units in another wing last year. And the amount, the total amount is $76,714 for the heat pump replacements. And the control units are $16,000, $16.40. And the combined number of $92,730.40 would be divided among the various general and utility funds.
Okay. Are you any comments or questions?
Can we get done?
So it's the next step in the, and we've got more wings to go yet, but this would be this year's version, this year's replacement schedule.
I guess just a point of clarification. Do we know if it's an equal split? I think I had heard from the finance director that it was actually a 2575 split.
Because of the wing?
I was gonna let him just divide it, but.
Things I'm hearing secondhand. So I guess if the finance director knows more specifically, the resolution states equally, but for voting for clarification purposes.
Wow, this is exciting. I don't usually talk about splits of accounts. But yeah, the way that this is budgeted currently is the 25% is budgeted in the city's general fund and the other 75% is budgeted between the electric fund, the water fund and the wastewater fund.
I like that better.
That's how it is in our budget.
So what are we approving then? 25% of this?
Well, you're probably approving the whole thing. Wouldn't we be including the whole thing, Keith, or?
Yeah, yes. I was the one, I missed, I identified it in the memo as 50/50. So if I didn't confirm with Tom as to what the split was on the.
This will help pay for Bob's excavator he's asking for. If we adopt the resolution, you will figure out the correct financing.
Yes.
Is that okay? Okay with you? Okay. So we're looking for to either adopt or not adopt Resolution 2580.
Motion.
Thanks, Jim.
Support.
Thanks, John. Okay, we have motion support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carried. Bob, you're up. Twenty-two thousand twenty-five wheeled excavator. Doesn't get any better than this, does it?
Good evening, Mayor Kramer and council members. Yeah, I guess the secret's out. So we were here tonight. We were ready to retire our '97 Ford New Holland Backhoe and looking to replace it with something much, you know, more capable. So when we were looking over the last year or so, that's the unit that we'd be replacing. So when we're looking for us to be able to do some of the tasks that we currently can't do, some ditching, or at least do efficiently, some ditching and some stormwater work as we're challenged with the backhoe. We looked at three different units over the last year or so. And we looked at them and priced them and got some quotes for you. That quote, I'm trying to see how these are strung in there. Could you go down a little bit for me? Okay, so that's the quote on the unit we decided we wanted. The other two quotes are in there as you have them in front of you. Do you have my memo up, Sean?
Yeah.
So on the bottom of the memo.
Keep scrolling.
You can see the units that we tested and they were quoted to us that way. We chose the Devlin DX7. I think it's a 100M, it's a typo, it's a 100. So we chose that one, a local vendor, Carlton Equipment. There was no real reason, they were very similar. The Volvo tested was too big for our use. They didn't offer one the size that we wanted. So we looked more seriously at the Tacucci and the Devlin and decided to come with a quote with the Devlin. But we removed a steel rotator rest that's in each of the quotes. Looking at that and talking to staff at a $50,000 to $60,000 price tag, we were afraid that we may not use it and get full benefit from it. If we feel later after having an excavator, it'd be beneficial. We would then come back to you and say, maybe this is something that would even make us more efficient. So we're proposing purchasing this equipment without that at a price tag of $169,722. That comes with ditching buckets, a mower. And I think we got a small bucket with that and a thumb so that we can pick up sidewalks. The excavator would allow us to do some things, like I said, that we currently do not do with the equipment we have and maintaining some ditches, whether that's either clearing them out or mowing them. It'd also allow us to do some sidewalk repairs without getting in the yard and having as much restoration work to those projects as well. It'll also help us with some storm work, especially when we get to the deeper systems. So in front of you is that. There's a lot of benefits to it. As far as even when we load brush, we'll be able to maintain an open lane typically with that kind of equipment because it doesn't require us backing in and setting up with a backhoe. Each time the Devlin would be able to pull up to that and just grab the brush pile and swing it over and load a truck. It also provides a more view for the operator. It's a much safer piece of equipment with a full rotating 360 degrees around it and stays in the same lane as it does that, with the exception of the bucket, which we'd have to control.
Okay. I'm sure it's a budgeted item.
It was included in this current fiscal year, yes.
We budgeted it for $215 or $220 this year.
Questions for Bob?
So now can you mow like on Michigan Avenue down, you reach right down into those ditches?
We, in this is a mower for us to be able to do that. We believe we will be able to do that. We seen, one of our staff members seen a similar item going down south on 27 mowing with it, just going down the road, so.
Yes, that is one of the areas that we've particularly looked at as far as how to.
Yeah, it'll reach over the guardrails. It'll, you know, things that we don't have access to.
Apparently have capability of, yes.
Let's buy a wheeled excavator. Motion.
Motion for Resolution, Jim and Emily? Okay. Another questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And you're still up, Bob, with the purchase of a 2014 vehicle?
Yeah. So since, I can remember since we took the position for about two and a half years, we have been looking for a trash truck. We call it that. It's a refuse truck. But primarily when we got here, that was our only method for picking up leaves. And then thankfully, we picked up the leaf truck. But this is something that is our backup plan for leaf pickup, but it also supplements our leaf pickup efforts. Primarily, it's used for backyard waste, early and late in the season when it's the heaviest. We currently use a '94 Ford. And you seen the image of that picture? So we have been looking. We asked every guy that calls on us, equipment dealer, hey, can you find us one of these? And finally, we got to the point where we were going to refurbish that one to, or at least try to refurbish it for a cost of $30,000 to $40,000. And we, through a trade magazine, we found something closer and accurate, actually two or three vehicles. And one with really low miles presented itself. We sent one of our mechanics down to test drive the vehicle and use it. And he came back and thought it was just a solid piece of equipment. It is a 14, it's got 45,000 miles on it. But that's a '94. So we're looking at, we believe it's a 20-year type of investment. We do also use that out to the cemetery. We kept a Tink's Claw. We still load leaves into that every year. So, but again, it is our backup plan. If the leaf truck goes down, that would be out doing all of the work. So we'd like to upgrade to the 2014.
Okay. Questions for Bob?
This would be paid for by the refuse fund, by the way. So.
It's your pleasure, folks.
Just for context, a new one of these costs.
300.
And for our purposes, we thought a used one would be appropriate.
Motion to buy a truck.
That a motion?
Support.
Okay.
Grabs.
Travis, okay, we have motion by John, support by Travis. No final questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Truck is bought. Thank you, Bob. Thank you. Twenty-one, a memo from Amanda regarding proposed ordinance amendment for bicycle, skateboards and roller skates. Amanda?
Yes, this is up for you once again. It was last introduced at the last council meeting. This is coming at the request of the police department. As noted during the last session, the ordinance that we had regarding these topics of bicycles and skateboards was created in the early 90s, predating a time at which people contemplated electric scooters and electric bicycles. And since then, the state law has been significantly updated. And the city would like to do the same so that they could regulate how those are used, where they are used to improve pedestrian safety as well as vehicular safety, particularly in the areas of downtown, but it does regulate use throughout the city.
Questions for Amanda?
Is that the map? That's the chapter?
If we introduced this last meeting and talked about it and backed for action.
Assume we're gonna have some signage maybe about this, especially downtown areas where it's restricted more.
It's required in downtown to note when you're entering the downtown district area where speed limits are then capped at 10 miles per hour. Outside of that, I believe it's up to 15 for those types of electric vehicle types.
Questions, comments? Action?
Motion.
To adopt ordinance number 875. Jim?
Support.
Thanks, Scott. We have motion, we have support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carried. Number 22, a letter from Bob Hawley, our planning administrator regarding proposed RRC zoning amendments for outdoor dining and sidewalk cafes. Robert?
Good evening. I'm not asking for money tonight, I promise. All right. Um, okay. So before tonight, I have the recommended zoning ordinance amendment for consideration from the Planning Commission. For the last year or so, or more, before I even started, City of Coldwater's been working with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation to achieve a certification with the RRC, which is the Redevelopment Ready Communities. A little bit of background. Certification lets developers know that we have done our homework and that we would like to work with them to bring new opportunities to the city. What's offered, there's a process, there's six phases to get certified. We're in the final phase, phase or phases of the process. They outline six best practices, which in the amendments that are proposed tonight kind of help solidify the rest of those best practices. They offer training, resource library, funding for zoning ordinance amendments, master planned amendments, which we have utilized in this process. And then post-certification, they do offer a redevelopment services team that will help promote and market redevelopment opportunities within the city. One of the things they utilize is like an online viewer, a real estate viewer. So the certification is valid for four years. On the fifth year, if there's something going on where like, because the best practices are best practices that can change. They offer a review period and give us an opportunity to get into compliance with that again. Going into the amendments, Sean, can you go to the red line, please? Okay, so section 2.2 is where we start in the amendments. These are the definitions in the zoning ordinance. The first four are dwelling ordinance amendments. These are just offering clarification to target some of the ideas for like triplexes, duplexes, quadplexes and that kind of stuff. So you have everything from boarding homes, which I think the only one we have that I can think of off the top of my head is where Massinari is for workforce, multifamily dwelling. So that's three, three or more families and up. So all the way up to apartments. Single family, single family and then two families duplexes. Additionally, there are two new additions of definitions that will be added for sidewalk cafe and outdoor cafe. The easiest way to describe these is sidewalk is in the right of way. And then outdoor is within the private property of the establishment. Next page. So section 3.1, the established section of the zoning ordinance, these are where we're going to allow uses. These, in this particular section, you're looking at. where we're going to include outdoor cafes, where we're going to include sidewalk cafes. And then as well as where we're going to require commercial building standards as well, which I'll go through a little bit more, a little bit more into in a second. The only place to note here is sidewalk cafes are only going to be permissible in the C two district or the downtown district. Next page.
But outdoor cafes are allowed in other commercial districts.
Correct, yep, they'll be, and that's what I'm going to go into here. So, um, yep, right there. So subsection B, where it says districts permitted, outdoor cafes are allowed in all commercial districts. They're allowed by right. They don't have to get any special form of approval or permission. As long as they meet the standards of the zoning ordinance, they should be good to go as a necessary use. Sidewalk cafes, however, because it isn't a public right of way, it will require, depending on which right of way it's in, because we do have M dot right of way, whoops. And then city right of way, they will have to get permission from the city. And then if if it's in the M dot right of way, they'll have to go to the state and get permission from them. The way that M dot works is they have to get our permission first to get approval from them anyways. It goes into additional standards and permitting processes here. Couple, you know, how you're supposed to set it up, advertising. And then it even has a clause in there if you're if you're in violation, that it could potentially remove. So we definitely want to make sure it stays nice and well maintained. Next one. So the next one, I can't read it from here anymore. Recommendation for the commercial building standards, which is five sixteen, this is also a new addition to the zoning ordinance. Two, two things are being added in here is ground floor transparency and then front door facades. We didn't want, the planning commission didn't want to require like any improvement to the ground floor facade that you have to meet this sixty percent transparency requirement. So the idea was is if they're doing two thirds more rehabilitation or whatever they're doing, then then they would have to bring that into compliance. So and then the other one is front facing doorways. You know, it's more inviting if you have front facing doorways in the downtown area to help promote downtown businesses. Next one. And then the last one is five point two of our zoning ordinance, which addresses off street parking and loading. This is offering parking reduction options. They're not required, but they are there as an incentive if a developer wants to utilize them. So offers options for bicycle parking, on street parking if it's a if it's available. And then electric vehicle charging stations. So there's, there's a calculation that kind of allows them to reduce the number of required parking spaces for their establishment if they offer those. With that, we had a public hearing on July twenty first, twenty twenty five, during which the planning commission voted eight to zero to recommend approval. We did receive public comment from the DDA for some input, what you guys have in your packet. With that, his request of the city council, consider the first reading and introduction of ordinance number eight seventy three.
Good explanation, Robert. Questions for Bob?
I just have one on like on Monroe Street, for example, if some of those businesses wanted to bump out like Broadway did. Does this affect that in any way?
Yeah, it really just, what all it really is doing is it's bringing what we've been doing, what we required with Broadway to do just on paper. So they have to come to, they have to come to the city, they have to go council, get approval to do it because it's still in the public right of way. So it shouldn't affect that. There are some restrictions in there for as far as like setbacks and stuff like that. But it it's, it's keeping in mind that we're not creating Broadway grill and, or sorry, we're not bringing Broadway grill into a lawful nonconforming status. They'll still be in conformance with the provisions that we're presenting.
So there's is somewhat of a model, what other people could do exactly what they have.
Correct.
It's all compliant, cohesive.
Yep.
Thank you.
Other questions for Robert? This is just an introduction, so it'll come back to us if we dig into and have questions. They're asking us to adopt, introduce ordinance number eight seventy three. Motion. Thank you, John.
Support.
Thank you, Scott. We have motion, we have support. All in favor, please say aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Robert. Finally, a letter from Amanda regarding proposed memo of understanding regarding land and funds related to property located at four twenty one North Willowbrook. Amanda?
Yes.
I made you do this. Do you want to do it or me?
I I can do it and I miss anything as to the, you know, the historical context. I'm sure you'll you'll fill that part in. But as happened at the last council meeting, the city approved sale of additional land that the city owns on North Willowbrook. That is a twenty acre portion of a sixty five acre portion of land bought in two thousand nine in auction. That land was purchased through by the city but using electric funds. And now as the city is selling off portions of that land, the question arose of how do we allocate those funds back towards the electric fund? And what do we want to do with those potential proceeds that the city is getting? Given that it was bought at a time when land values were much lower and we are getting a better return on our investment now? And what can we do with those funds? And this sets up a MOU, a kind of an internal agreement, but really is just solidifying on paper how the city proposes to use those funds. And it's setting up a capital improvement fund. And the MOU kind of outlines how those funds are used. It would seek approval anytime the city wants to buy additional land that it would require the board's approval as well as city council's approval. And really, it's focused on land acquisition, but could include other things if both, you know, the board and the city agree that those are worthwhile endeavors to use this fund for.
I mean, we've talked about this a little bit, but we bought this land in two thousand nine. To kind of repeat what Amanda said, we borrowed the money from the BPU electrical fund. This pays them back with some interest and then the profit, so to speak, will be put into a fund that we both will have say over, so to buy future land in essence, that's what it is. It was a, I think, a fair deal with the utility and us and I think Travis is aware of it. And it makes us, we will have a fund, I think it'll start out, is this sale closed on the last twenty acres?
Not yet.
But soon?
But soon.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll have a fund, a couple hundred thousand in that, when that's all said and done, if I remember roughly?
I think it's about three hundred and forty thousand from the sale. After we do a survey, that'll be more precise, but then we still have an additional twenty acres or so that the city owns.
Potentially, it could be three hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars in this fund that we would then hopefully jointly buy land somewhere else. So that was the idea to, we would never resolve this in oh nine. It was kind of something that was never clarified. And so this clarifies it. It seems like a fair deal. So questions? Not, we're looking to adopt resolution number twenty five eighty four and agreement eight twenty five thirty to put this on the record.
Ooh.
Thanks, Randall.
Support.
Thanks, Travis. Final questions? Not? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Amanda. We have a last spot on our agenda for public comments. If anyone would like to address the council, Kathy Gordon? No? Okay. Uh, there's no problems. Oh, yes, sir. Come on up, will you? Just please state your name.
I'm Shane Taylor. I'm one of the property owners on Amberview Court. I guess you're not taking questions, but just wanted to throw this out there. I didn't realize the cost of sidewalks cost so much. But a few people think that somebody's going to pay twenty three thousand dollars for sidewalks? Flip nuts. Hope they don't work at Walmart. This is crazy. And then you guys are requiring sidewalks and going to charge us interest on it. Really? Nobody walks in my neighborhood. It's a cul-de-sac. You've got bunches of streets from Moore Street West, from State Street, clear to Herbert Street, no sidewalks. And you got Pan Sophia Academy. So if anything should have a sidewalk, it should be that neighborhood. If you're going to make us have sidewalks, everybody needs to have sidewalks. And the last thing, um, worked up there. This letter came Friday for the meeting today. I hope that, I guess we're going to send out assessments on what our bill's going to be. Hopefully that comes in a more timely fashion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seen none, any unfinished business at council level? Jimmy?
I'd like to bring up the sidewalk assessment.
Yes.
The corner lots in the special assessment of residential sidewalk maintenance and improvement program. I'd heard that they're up to twenty four thousand. I don't, I I personally don't think it's fair. Maybe your neighbor has the same amount of frontage as you do and they're paying four thousand and you're paying twenty four thousand or twenty four thousand. And assessed over ten years, that's a two hundred dollar a month assessment for a sidewalk when other people would be more like forty dollars a month for the same. So I would.
Well, you're right. Before you go on, the only caveat to that, if that's an empty lot and somebody would buy that lot tomorrow and put a house on it, they're, they've, they have had to pay for all, all the sidewalk. So are you saying the city's gonna pay for a portion of a sidewalk because it's empty? And if somebody would buy it tomorrow and build a house, they would be required to put a sidewalk on both sides, which is the case now?
Yeah, in the past, it was the side yard. I can look it up. At the side yard was they paid fifty percent up to.
Not in North Shore and Arrowhead in the last twenty years.
Correct. So historically, whatever these were, but.
I don't disagree, but what you're asking, though, you're asking the taxpayers to pay for a portion of somebody's sidewalk if they go buy that lot and build a new house on it in a year. You follow me? I mean, that is.
What was, was it a, was it a written agreement when they bought them? Was that part of the requirement?
Well, every new house, Amberview or wherever, has to have a new sidewalk. Period. I mean, that, that, so you're putting sidewalks and that, again, I just.
Yeah, no, I'm.
Problem charging somebody twenty three thousand dollars for a sidewalk, but Nick Kreminski, who just built a house on a corner lot six months ago, paid for all his sidewalk. So are you gonna?
I, I didn't.
I know.
Yeah.
I know. So I don't know if, I don't know.
It was, I believe it was two thousand and four when the council in, put that policy in place. That currently exists.
You're gonna go back and reimburse Nick for the both slots that he just did? I don't know. It's, it's tough. And we have time, like you said, this is not, there there'll be other assessments for people coming. Nothing is set in stone yet. That's why we have these hearings. But I I thought of that after you mentioned it earlier and that, that's, that's a valid point. That you're paying for somebody who's going to build a house next year.
Yeah, right. Well, I.
I don't, I don't know the answer, but. Or any other comments, thoughts?
Well, to me, it's a pros and cons and I have in a side lot, I have in the corner lot. And that's one of the cons. Other pros for having it, and that's why people choose or not to choose, would be my opinion.
It's a lot of money, but it was a lot of money for Mr. Kreminski who just did it six months ago. It's a, it's a lot. I understand.
Are there, are there people in these neighborhoods that maybe have bought and sold and bought and sold? Does somebody like, maybe houses been on the market and sold three or four times and wasn't aware of this? So like previous homeowners lived in it for five or ten or fifteen years and didn't pay for the sidewalk? And now somebody just, I don't know, somebody just bought it and all of a sudden and they didn't, they didn't, weren't aware of that?
I don't know. It would be on there. It should be.
Is your question whether it would be on their tax?
Title search. So about two thousand and four, and that's when, yeah, I remember, I was actually part of that, when the, when the city addressed this. So in the meantime, you know, if you just bought a home, maybe that home has been bought and sold three times since two thousand and four, however old those homes are over there.
Would the assessments still be on your stand for that sidewalk?
You never pay, nobody else ever paid for the sidewalk.
What it's suggesting is like, people should be already grandfathered in that owned the house prior to two thousand and four. And if it's sold after that, they should, them people should have been the ones to.
I mean, because the original, you're making the original builders put the sidewalk in. And I just, if I just went in and bought a home that he owned and he owned it before him and, you know, you're telling me it's twenty four thousand for a sidewalk? Where, where was, when I bought the house legally, where, where was that information when I bought it? Where was that?
The title search would come up if the assessment was still outstanding. Your title would show that.
We didn't have assessments on them though at the time.
We, we, yeah, at North Shore, when it was developed, we paid for, right, but I don't know about after oh four.
I don't know. It's just another question.
No, no, I know. Good, good discussion. I just, every, every homeowner in North, at least North Shore and Arrowhead, and I believe Amberview, had to put a sidewalk in front of their house when they built. And so it's those people that have that extra lot, they wanted to have an extra lot, or the people have been sitting on the lot for twenty years. You know, and if you're gonna have, if you're gonna make them do sidewalks, there is a logic, it has to be connected or we shouldn't have done it. I wasn't in favor of it in twenty years ago, but the council wanted to do them, so. Any other comments on this right now? We can always readdress this. This will be coming up again. Any other unfinished business at council level? Any new business at our level? We're adjourned.